Well, at six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order for October the 2nd. If Shad can lead us in prayer.
Father, we thank you for another day that you've given us. And we thank you for your love, your mercy, your grace, and the opportunity to be able to call upon your great holy name. Lord, we thank you for each and every one of you that's come out tonight. We thank you, God, that you've allowed us to get here safely. For now, we ask you that you go with us as we go into this meeting. Would you give us the wisdom and knowledge that you know that we need to take care of the business items that is on the agenda tonight? Or would lead God directs us in each and every one of those decisions? Lord, I pray that you forgive us for all of our many sins. And give, we thank you for all of our blessings. All these things we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone can join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is item four, considering the agenda for adoption. We do have a few changes. Need to add, under new business, item H, planning and zoning, temporary building moratorium. And then we need to strike, under new business, item D, aquatic center, report of bids for Wi-Fi installation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we change those.
Second. Please vote. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Next, item five, consider for adoption the following meeting minutes. Number, item A, regular council meeting of September the 18th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote. Carries five oh. Next, item B, executive session meeting of September 18th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we adopt it.
Second. Second, please vote. Motion carries five oh. Next, under item six, acknowledgements, proclamations, there are none. Item seven, old business, planning and zoning, number one, rezoning application, 2018-144, Anse Hall Creek.
Well, Mayor, members of council, this is an item that you had at your September 18th meeting. We had a number of conditions that were put on the rezoning by the planning commission, and so you asked to postpone it to tonight's work session. Be happy to, if you want to read the conditions in the record, or we need to review the conditions and discuss any of those. The application, the rezoning, of course, is for rezoning to R2 to build a 30-unit, single-family detached subdivision on 10 acres. Property is located along Charles Place, across from the Library and Senior Center.
I think it'd be a good project.
I have a question.
Yes.
Reading is very blurry. Does anything?
Tried to get it on one page.
What happens when you get old, you know?
Yeah. Well, it's just a little blurry. What is the outside of houses going to be made out of? Are they?
Would you care to address that?
Great, already planned, shaking stone, a miniature. And I actually bought a full set of plans of one of our technical owners.
And we've got some.
Linda, you welcome, Linda, you welcome to look at these?
We've got some floor plans, which I really like.
That's a full set right here. You can look at these. We're trying to do front porch and back screen porch. A lot of people aren't doing that, that people want.
This has like.
Cobblestone on the front with, this is shaking here.
That's perfect.
And that home right there is 20, I think it's 20, 2,400, depending on the budget. Typically, what we want to do is what you see more in Oconom County with front porch, back screen porch.
I like.
They're going to be nicer than any homes that's already in there.
Yes, I built another house in there.
Yeah, you want to have a front porch and a screen porch in the south, isn't it?
Thank you.
That's what we need anyway.
The minimum floor area is 2,200 square feet, minimum heated floor area of the homes. The lot sizes, I know there's some question about that. There's no less than 7,000 square feet. The average lot size is about 9,150 square feet.
Couple of things I've got, which, you know, from what you're saying, I don't think's going to affect you anyway, but no vinyl siding, but fine with vinyl windows and cornice. Just not siding. And then the only other thing I'd like to see is the landscape entrance and monument sign to be approved by the planning department. To just see what it is and say, yep, that's good, or, you know, for some reason, we said, oh, that looks awful, you know?
With the right way we're giving up, I need to go out there and with my engineer measure and see, you know, what, what can we do before we promise that we'll do that before it's me.
We're not looking for the Country Club of the South entrance, but, you know.
We believe a good entrance will make something happen.
It does.
He put up a sign, a banner, something like that.
Yeah. That was the only thing that I had about it.
Even if we just do two columns, what I would like to do is gas lanterns at the top, something that makes it stand out. But I need to figure out, because we are giving up a large portion, and so we're limited with what we can do, left and right, and front and back, so.
Are you widening that road?
Well, he's giving us right away for, he's giving us right away for potential widening that road over there.
And you've got to have a turn.
Yeah, well, what is required? Yeah, these L or, right. So that's what I need to get my engineer out there, but I'll do that, sir.
Yep. I say, I'm not saying we're going to be overly restrictive, but just want to be able to signs or something, focus on.
Well, I want to be able to tell you straight.
Yeah.
Well, with the changes that the mayor's requested, go with it, sir. I make a motion that rezone the property.
Yes, I was going to say, we postpone the public hearing also when we postpone.
Do I have a motion that we open the public hearing?
Motion, open the public hearing.
Second. Second, please vote. Christopher recused, carries four oh. We have anyone that wants to speak in favor of the rezoning application?
I do. My name is, my name is Rob Renaud. I'm at 201 Delonica Street, Suite 200, kind of 12. And I am, I guess, sort of the applicant, I am the developer of the project. And what we wanted to do is just a, similar to what Jim Chapman's done with Nestle up here, and just a friendly, we want to, we want front porches where neighbors meet each other, sidewalks, and we want to have certain areas where they can have a place to walk their dog and be close to coming, because there's a lot of things about to happen in downtown Coming, and we believe people are going to want to walk their sidewalk from, from our side all the way to the courthouse. We don't have to put in, we would, but we don't have to, is there. And that's what we believe people want, is the live, work, play that this property will allow. You're seeing it in Roswell, Alpharetta, and it's time for Coming. So that's why we want to do, it's like a front porch community where people can walk, have dinner, walk back home, go to Tam's, walk back home. And that's sort of what we want. That's what we envision that people want. And I believe Jim Chapman, who is doing this project up here, saw it first, and he's been very successful. And it's very similar to that. We'll have a mandatory homeowners association that will keep up the grounds, keep up with everything, and we don't believe it'll be that expensive, because we're not doing swim tennis. You really need about 90 lots to do swim tennis to make it affordable. We're going to have a dog park. We may have a vegetable garden area that we've set aside, where you get a plot. Those are things that our marketing people are working on now. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said there's a variance granted to the minimum lot width of 70 feet and no less than 60, but the minimum lot size shall be no less than 7,000 square feet. Is that not an optimal line?
No, it's just changing the width, it could just be a deeper lot.
Yeah, it depends on, we're 60 to 75 feet wide. The property is sort of a square, but it's not deep enough in certain areas. But we wanted to give a buffer to that back area. And so some of our lots are, go down to 60, some, but the 70s and 75-foot lots aren't as deep, because we wanted to give a buffer against that neighborhood.
But you can't do a minimum of, say, 100 feet?
Uh, no, ma'am. I mean, that would be, uh, that would be really difficult.
You go down to probably 20 houses.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, once you do website marketing, entryway, landscaping.
I'm saying the width.
It's very rare that you see a subdivision less than 30 lots. And there's a reason for that. It's, it's just not cost effective.
Yeah, I mean, the difference is you're, they're narrower, but they're deeper.
Thank you.
But it's also, it's, as far as like worried about side to side, there are 10-foot build mines on each side. You know what I'm saying? So that's twinning.
Between foundations.
And now, Scott, does our count overhang?
We.
How do we observe that? Overhang or foundation?
We typically, we typically do, because it's supposed to be 20 foot between, between buildings for fire access.
Right. So you really, time you put an overhang and gutters, you're going to be 23 feet minimum.
Okay. I just didn't understand the width versus the long line.
Like I've, I've built on some that were, they weren't 40 feet wide at the road, but then they might have been, right, they're just a big old pie, you know? And they'd be over a half acre, but they were narrow at the street. You get that in Colasax a lot.
Yeah.
Where it's wide, it's narrow at the street, but then it's wide.
Yeah, it's not wide, but you have to keep that.
Right. Any other questions or discussion?
Is all ranch properties?
Sir?
Are all ranch properties?
Uh, we, you know, we may do some two stories, but mainly what we want to do are ranches, yeah. We want to do front porches that maybe not all the way across, and a screen porch in the back, or all the way across, front porch and no screen in the back. Some people may want to put a pulley. But that's what we believe in right now, is, is being different than Pulte and all these other guys. Be a little different, because the buyer right now doesn't have a lot of choice, except for public builders. I mean, you don't find it much.
What's the price of these homes starting?
They're going to be like $349.9 to $429, or bigger ones. Now, in terms of the entranceway, for that to be cemented, when do I need to get that to you, sir?
Just before you install it.
Oh, not before the council vote?
No, we're, we're just, it'll be in what we're approving that we have to approve.
I'll tell you what, I'll have it before council vote.
Well, we're going to vote on it here in a minute, so you don't have to be quick.
I thought this was work session and went to council.
We can vote.
Uh-oh.
You've seen a stop work order before, haven't you?
Yeah.
So we, we give you sign away.
Okay, it's usually you go work session, planning, council.
We're efficient.
Well, I love it. Thank you. Yeah, any other questions? I mean.
Anybody else?
I do, we want you to be proud of what we do. We want to come back and do more here, so we respect you. We want to do the best absolutely we can, and it'll be something, I hope you guys will say, yeah, we like that.
Yep.
Those guys did a good job.
Thanks.
That's what we want. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? I have a motion when we close the public hearing. Please vote. Carries four oh. Have any other discussion or questions?
No, bye next time.
I'll entertain.
I'll make a motion that we zone the property.
With, with the conditions of approving the monument sign and entrance.
And we'll add, we'll add those as conditions 18 and 19 about the siding that we're going to get.
Conditions that we've added.
Right. No vinyl siding. Do I have a second? Please vote. Passes four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is number two, amendment to zoning ordinance for information only.
Mayor, we're, we're next meeting, we're preparing some amendments to the zoning ordinance. Part of them will be to address one of the issues coming up tonight a little bit regarding temporary structures, metal structures, metal carports, manufactured type buildings that are coming up, and they're popping up in and around the city. The reason we've had, got on here for information only is because we have to comply with zoning procedures, but this and the sign ordinance, we want to give you a heads up that is coming. Give you a chance, if there's anything else the council wants to see addressed with zoning ordinance before we take any further action on it, this is a good time for us to consider that, get your input on that before we prepare that ordinance.
This is five weeks.
It is. Councilwoman Leibert, the idea is that it'll expire in two weeks. Out of an abundance of caution, in case someone had changes they wanted to make to the ordinance that we presented in two weeks, I didn't want us to have to have another moratorium. So I said it'll last for five weeks, which that gets us to your next work session. And then if, so we have to have the zoning ordinance, have the work session for good, but if not, and you vote in two weeks, that moratorium, then.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But that's a, but we'll, we'll do that down under H, the actual resolution. So if there's anything you want to talk about, any additional concerns anybody has with the zoning ordinance, we'd be directed on that.
This doesn't.
It pertains to just somebody building, just like Rob's house. That doesn't affect the, it's just in the commercial districts.
Oh, it's in the, okay.
Commercial districts, that's it.
I think we've got enough metal buildings in our highway business.
Thinking about putting up about four.
We might get outvoted here in a minute.
Get some more car lots going.
That's what we need, right? Anybody, any questions for Kevin on that before the next regular meeting?
So we're voting on a moratorium tonight?
Later in the agenda. So then, number three, amendment to the sign ordinance.
Same thing, because our sign ordinance regulates signs based upon the zoning district that they're in, and our sign ordinance provisions have to comply with zoning procedures act. So we're going to have a sign ordinance change to address a couple of things. One of them is, when you see it, just so you know, it'll address things like sports banners and that sort of stuff, that would fall under the definition of a banner in our sign ordinance that really was not what we were expecting to capture necessarily. Also, some of these smaller signs that end up being placed in, around, and close to the right of way in our commercial district as well, and some of them we're looking to make some changes to. You may remember, we passed a legally revised sign ordinance earlier this year, and now that we've had a little time to digest it, think about it, and see how it's possibly changing signs around the city, we're coming back and looking at, tweaking a couple of things. And want to give the council the opportunity to raise any additional concerns that you have, if there are any, before we put the final version of the ordinance in front of you on the 16th.
Well, there's certain areas a sign needs to start higher than other areas.
Okay.
Higher. For instance, where if you're pulling out in the road, you can see in, under that sign to see if there's anything coming.
Sure.
What's that? Oh, no, but.
And also, Councilwoman Leibert, we did get rid of that one sign that we talked about.
Yeah.
Out there on Atlanta Road.
Right.
Nice one to remove that, but it's no longer there. We have to change that sign, or move that sign further, we'll make sure we keep that space underneath Belgium, so you can get a view of the traffic.
Part of what we're running into right now, and they've, they've really been cracking down on enforcing the sign ordinance, and we still got a long ways to go. But when signs have been there, one got taken down, it's been there 17 years. Never been permitted, it was illegal, been there 17 years. You know, when me and Jody were walking through town the other week, and we've got a sign for Amacola Falls on Highway 9, and the sign posted about to rest in two. I mean, you know, it's, if you walk, if you walk through town, you will see a whole lot of stuff that you don't realize when you drive. So they've really been, our guys have been doing a great job and working on that to try to clean it up.
Well, a lot of it in this old stuff is going to have to be somebody that's interested in, in wanting it to look better and work better.
And that's what we're, you know, we're about to be working on beautifying and adding sidewalks out Atlanta Road, from Dairy Queen to Mr. Swiss would be phase one, and planting some trees and that kind of stuff, and, you know, but.
Do we basically have a monument sign ordinance for a church?
Well, it's in our sign ordinance. Where we got one problem, like, say the sign that you were talking about. When that sign was put up, Atlanta Road was two lane, not three lane.
Right.
Like Dairy Queen, their sign.
Have to move.
Their sign, it was a one-way street when that got put up. Well, now it's a problem, you know, and it's really not the owner's fault. You know, there's a few situations where we may need to step in and, and say, look, we'll, because this is a public safety hazard, we may have to, to pay and, and adjust their signs a little bit so that visibility is adequate, you know? I mean, there's not a lot of those, but there's a few.
I think, like Louis said, I think a lot of the community partners, and Louis says we'll partner with the same, do it some different ways.
Yep.
Planting trees and donating or moving, changing signs, you know, and help them out with permitting and different things like that.
Right.
I think that's a good approach.
For an example, I don't know if we're there yet, if not, I think we had one left or something, but Dairy Queen to Mr. Swiss, we acquired right of way, we got easements, all that, and it was all free. Nobody, because they're on board of us, improving it, you know? They're really not losing anything. I think we only got a couple hundred square feet of additional right of way. That's not much for that long of a road, but, but it is going to make a difference pretty soon. So it's just the, when you've got yard signs that are, they're right out of the right of way, but they're right on it, and they're cluttering everywhere, it's just not appealing. You know, so that's one of the things we want to talk about addressing.
I think we need to push, you know, grandfather clauses around, you know? Don't, don't push people around, but we do need something to get it cleaned up. You, you see what I'm talking about? I think people will work with us.
But when you got a sign on the building, then you got a sign out at the road, and then you got three yard signs, I mean, how many signs do you need?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? That's the.
But I mean, if they got a permit, and it was permitted at the time, that's.
You go fight very few permits. Very few permits. I don't have all permit out there. They want no sign order, they want no nothing.
As of right now, it's not required for a yard sign, or anything under 15 square feet. They can just go put it up.
That wasn't one of the things we changed anyways?
No. That's why we're bringing it back up.
Yeah, anytime you do an ordinance, you're always going to figure out tweaks.
Yep. Any other comments on that? And we'll address it at the next meeting. Next is item eight, new business, letter A, administration update, animal control ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the county, Todd County is looking to, and has passed an ordinance. Here's the purpose of this ordinance is, they're going to be handing off animal control. Right now, the, we, the county handles our animal control, I now it's done with the sheriff's office. They're going to be handing off their animal control to code enforcement for the county during the daytime hours, and I think we learned it within our meeting that's until 9:00 PM.
Nine to nine.
Nine to nine. And then from 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM, it'll be the sheriff's office.
Saturday and Sunday?
Yes. Believe it or not.
Yep.
It'll be a nine, two 12-hour shifts, the first 12-hour shift, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, is code enforcement from 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM, it'll be the sheriff's office. Our current animal control ordinance doesn't really contemplate anybody other than law enforcement handling animal control. In, in any event, it's obviously the official, we're working with the county to handle our animal control ordinance, that we have the, have the same ordinance in place. I've reviewed this, this is provided to you tonight for informational purposes, the county is not expecting us to take any action on this tonight. I've reviewed it, I don't have any concerns with it, it complies with the current Georgia state law when it comes to animal control, and including the classification for the animals, in terms of the period of the classification you can have, like animals aggressive, or bites, or impacts an animal, or impacts a human, and all that. So tonight, again, for informational purposes, if you want to review it, we'll be bringing it back to you for your consideration at the October 16th meeting.
But we are adopting basically the same ordinance the county has?
Yes, this, what you're looking at is the county's ordinance. We've not taken it yet, we've been in a couple of different places that we can complete it for the purpose of turning it into a city ordinance, and that's why I'm just giving you the county ordinance tonight to take a look at.
So there are some things you'll tweak from this, or?
Something, not, not, it's, that's what it mainly is, it's technical stuff, changing all the references and that sort of thing. There may be a couple of places where we refer to the chief of police or his designate, but largely, you're looking at the ordinance as, as it will end up being adopted.
Any other questions? We'll move on to item B, parking wreck, number one, alcohol service at the event center, information only.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a subject we had approached a few months back, and we've been working on to put a policy together to allow for the service of alcohol during air rentals that are building at the recreation department. We had created it, this is pretty much what y'all had reviewed earlier in the year, but we had put it, everything together, Kevin had gone over it with his eagle eye, and I found there were a couple of things in that, the way we had originally written it, that were actually contrary to our, our, the alcohol policy we've already had. So we've tried to clean it up, make sure there's no, no problem with how this goes in with our alcohol policy. So as I said, most of this is the same as y'all read however many months ago. What I wanted to point out to you were the, was the main thing that has changed. We did have a section in there that prohibited the advertisement of an event with alcohol. Obviously, that goes contrary to what we do at the fairgrounds, so we took that element out of it altogether, so we would coincide with the way things are done at the fairgrounds. The other one, and we had discussed at the last meeting, was the who to allow to provide our services for the catering of alcohol. And at that time, we had discussed anybody with a, an alcohol, valid alcohol license within the city limits of coming. And looking at that, and in talking with Gainesville and a couple of others that have had this issue in the last few months, there's one restaurant owner that is interested in doing. doing it, that is inside the city limits. I've not gotten any, anybody else that is willing to say, "Yes, we would be interested in do this," or "Yes, we would like to put, be able to do this." I wasn't sure about limiting it to one provider. And in Gainesville, who had used one provider for quite some time, they ran into the same issues of people wanting to have events, wanting to have alcohol added. The one caterer that was allowed to provide that service was already booked, and so they were limited in, in what days they could have bookings and everything else. So, we've tweaked this just a little bit, and we've created an application for anybody that's within the city of coming, city limits, or Forsyth County can apply to be a server or provider of alcohol at our events. It's a one-page application that just verifies their alcohol license and the fact that they can provide alcohol pours, licensed pours at the event. So, I wanted to bring this up to you because we did, it was kind of specifically stated at the last meeting that we would use city of coming restaurants for caterers only. I was afraid that was limiting that to us a little bit, and so wanted to open it up, but I would like it to be something where we can provide a license, an easy licensing format to get people to want to do it and have something in our hands. I don't, I did not want us to get to the point where Phil comes in, he wants to have a, an event, and he just pulls the name out of the hat for a caterer, and we have to do all of the legwork at that time. As we get a licensed provider, we will add it on to the list. When Phil comes up and he wants to have an event with alcohol, we give him our current list of these are the providers you are able to use. So, it makes it, it kind of streamlines, streamlines it on our end, but it doesn't hamstring the person that is wanting to have an event there by limiting it to one or two categories. So, I did want to point that out to you, that that was a change we made that was kind of anti what we had discussed before.
And I don't, and I don't think we've had an event, anybody's even tried to have an event since we passed that, have we?
We've had a couple to come and ask about it. One of those was an event where they actually wanted to have a wine and beer tasting, but they wanted, and I'm assuming this, that the distributors were kind of working with them to provide the alcohol that would be tasted, and the distributors were going to provide the pours. Well, they're not licensed pours, they're not trained to see this person's been over served, and so that would have, that went against what we were very, wanting to be very strict with, and not only do you have a, an alcohol license, but you're able to provide an alcohol pour that is trained to do this kind of stuff. Yes.
And you can use anybody you want to, as long as your caterer has a license.
If they won't get, if, if, like, if you come to us and somebody, you want to use a caterer that is not on our list, then we will contact, or you will contact, we will contact that caterer to add them to the list, as provided there's enough time ahead of time.
But is that restricting them to Forsyth County?
It is, it does state that they would have to be within Forsyth County, like, the provider would have to have a business inside of Forsyth County.
And they go through an application process?
Right, and it's, we call it, it's an application process, but it's a one-page application. It provides their alcohol license, make sure it's current, their list of their provide, of their pours, and the fact that, you know, and then after you secure a caterer, then we will have a contract for them to sign to designate who their pours will be for that event. So, it just, it was different from what we had agreed on at the last time, but I think it's going to streamline the whole process, not make it tough on us or the customers.
I have another question. Why not a catch bar?
The exchange of money at an event like that leads to problems with the overconsumption of alcohol. I mean, just frankly. Plus our other, plus our other thing that, well, currently, until we get to the next item on the agenda, right now, we do not allow the exchange of money for goods or services at the, at the, at our rentals anyway. So, the providing, it, it's kind of a two-headed devil. It goes against what we've been doing anyway, which may be getting ready to change.
So, you have to pay the caterer a certain amount where somebody can't come up and say, "I need..."
Yeah. And it's going to, I know it costs me five dollars, but I'll give you twenty if you'll, if you'll go ahead and serve me when you know I don't need to be served. Not that I've ever seen that happen, but...
So you're told. So you're told.
But that's just what I heard.
That was at Phil's event.
The event he's trying to book.
Yeah, it is a party.
Sorry, I should have pulled another name.
That's okay.
But we, I think this policy is ready to go. It does not require a vote or anything. I just wanted to make y'all aware of some of the conditions y'all had placed on it earlier had been changed and tweaked, and wanted to make y'all aware of it.
I'm fine with it.
Well, we're working, well, in fact, the first event we have with alcohol, I'll tell you if we did a good job or not.
We may never have one.
This is a lot of work, putting it together and pulling some things together. I appreciate it.
Worked hard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next is number two, rate increases for 2019.
All right, this is for our, and this is, I guess, information only. This is not going to require a vote. This is just, in having that room open, or our rental rooms open for two years now, we've kind of seen what works, what doesn't work, what problems we run into with the bookings and the scheduling we have. We knew initially that we were way underpriced, but quite frankly, we wanted to be. We wanted to draw people to us initially to see our facility, to show them what we can do, and, but in these last two years, the people, I don't know that we have competitors because everybody is so much more expensive than us, quite frankly, but their prices have continued to go up, and our prices have kind of made states the same. So, we have looked at some price increases after the first of the year, and we've also kind of looked at a tiering of the types of rentals available, and that has something to do with their pricing. Our major issue with events, we, if we have an event where the Chamber of Commerce has an information seminar that, you know, it's for two hours or four hours in the, in the afternoon, and they've got tables, and they're doing presentations, there's no food served, those go off, those are easy, they're easy-peasy, no problems with them, they're well-coordinated. Where you run into problems, and where we've run into expense, is events with food, especially bigger events with food, you know, in the excess of a hundred and fifty to two hundred people. We had budgeted for two carpet cleanings a year, and, you know, right now, we probably need to be doing about six. I mean, because food spills, food stains, you know, it's just, and they come from events that have food. So, one of our, our suggestion is to leave our prices as they are for events without food. The Chamber of Commerce events, the Forsyth County Board of Education event, events that are not serving food or providing food, we're not, we, we don't want to touch those prices. We like those clients coming in, they're, they're easy to set up and take down. What we would like to do is, is have a twenty percent increase in our rates for events with food, whether this food be heavy appetizers, or they be a sit-down meal, whether it be a buffet meal, to help, basically to help cover the cost of our cleanup and our, our maintenance bills that we're suffering because of them. So, that is tier, our second tier right now is sort of rentals with service of food. Now, when we opened up the building, it was initially stated that, you know, we would not allow a group to come in and rent the facility and profit off the facility, meaning you couldn't rent the facility and sell goods, you couldn't rent the facility and sell tickets for an event. And that's all, and I, and I get it, and we've not had any major issues with that. Where that does run into a little bit of an issue is, is people that are interested in providing a fundraiser or having a fundraiser there, where, you know, they're going to do some advanced sales of whether it's a plate or whatever they do, but they're trying to make money, so they want to be able to take money in at the door as well. So, we created tier three here, it's just a different rate for people that will be, there will be money turning over hands at the event, whether it's the sale of goods or whether it's the, the sale of tickets or those kind of events. We did not want to get into the whole percentage sharing, you know, you brought in two hundred dollars, you owe us, you know, that's, so we just, we looked at covering the cost and the covering the expense of that with another tier of pricing. And the tier of pricing for, if you want to have an event where you sell goods, sell services, or sell tickets, would be forty percent more for any particular room or booking than what it had been when we initially opened up. So, that's kind of how the tiers work. If you look at the page that is highlighted, the column at the far, far left is what our prices are and have been and will stay for events without food. The price is in the middle, or what our prices will be for those rooms and those bookings with food, and the last column is the pricing for what it would be with the selling of goods or selling of services. So, we've kind of broken it down into, to the tiers, just to basically kind of get us up to the level of other people that are providing the service. We can't compete with Leneertech and some of the others because we're not full service. We don't have the linens, and we don't have the tableware, we don't have our own in-house staff to provide catering. So, we're never going to reach those, those limits that they've got on their bookings. But I think this will put us a little bit more in, in line with not being just dirt cheap, so to speak, and, and getting a little bit more bang out of a facility that everybody loves when they come into and use.
Any questions?
All the rest of it that you see highlighted here is just changes in, in kind of infrastructure within the things that we've seen over the last couple of years. We had been up to this point requiring a twenty-five percent deposit of your total fee upfront. Quite frankly, that twenty-five percent of deposit was not, in instances that we've had to keep, was not covering the cost of the damages done during the booking. So, we're going to a fifty percent deposit that you'll pay to book any kind, any room or any facility. If you don't do any damage, you get your money back. If you do damage, well, we've got a little bit more of a nest egg to cover the damages that you did. I think everything else is pretty much, the only other thing that we did change in here is, in our previous rules, or our initial rules, it stated that if you stay over your rental time, past your rental time, there was a hundred dollars per hour charge. They get to be nine o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night, they want to stay now another hour, they were willing to pay, they wanted to pay another hundred dollars in just to stay. Well, I've got staff that's been there for eight, nine hours at that point already, and that gets to be, so, right now, if you stay past your rental time, it will, you will forfeit your deposit. So, it's going to take a little bit more out of your checkbook if you, if you decide you want to hang around and party while my guys are ready to go home.
Don't need action on this, Kevin.
You know, this is just, some of these changes were things that I was afraid people might question and not make their way to y'all about. So, I just wanted y'all to know it upfront.
Well, I'm good with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Next is item C, October trunk or treat slash food truck event. That's going to be our last Fridays at the fairgrounds. It'll be the Friday after the fair ends, third Friday of October, and we're going to be teaming up with the sheriff's office. So, it'll be the same stuff that we normally do, but it'll also be trunk or treat, where you'll get the people with the old cars, then you'll have the sheriff's office and, and that kind of stuff. I'd even like for the city to be able to, we could put candy on the, the golf carts and kids can do that. So, the changes I'm wanting to make for that event, because it is going to be really geared towards kids, we won't serve alcohol at that one, and I'd like to waive the five-dollar fee to get in.
Except for nineteen.
Right. Yep.
How about you?
So, any questions or...
Encourage costumes?
Yes.
What are you dressing up as?
There's going to be costume con, costume contests and all that kind of stuff. We are, we're going to be pushing all, we're going to be pushing all that stuff real hard to encourage all that. So, um, so I guess I'd need a motion for us to buy some candy and waive the fee. I have a second.
But who gets to pick the candy?
Right. This guy?
Jeff is the candy man. He's the candy man. Jeff is the candy man.
Me and Jeff will eat it while we're there.
Yeah. Just remember, don't shop on an empty stomach.
That's right. He's our best candy customer.
So, I got a first and a second, motion and a second. Please vote. Gary's five-o. Do we need to put an amount? Do we need to redo that, put an amount on candy?
I think it's going to be, there's a way to put an amount.
Yeah, we're not, we're not buying thousands of dollars of candy.
No.
Um, next is utilities, and this is going to be for informational only right now, nuisance ordinance revision for odors.
So, you have a copy of a nuisance ordinance revision in your packet, I'm passing out the actual copy of the ordinance that we prepared, the one that is in your packet, something that staff had put together, we've taken the chance and opportunity to look at it, tweak it some, and what you have here is a little, a little bit more comprehensive. This is for informational purposes only, this is kind of a big change, it's the first time coming, it's taken a step in this direction towards regulating odors. And it's, it is something that has been done in a lot of places. There are these actual devices called ofactometers that can be used to measure the concentration of odor polluted air versus clean air, and there are ways to measure that, and we call for it in this ordinance. I, I will go ahead and tell you that existing agricultural operations are not allowed by state law to be declared nuisances. That would include things like places that process meat, poultry, turning from raw products into processed or completed food products, those by state law cannot be declared a nuisance for the purposes of their, of their odor. I bring that up, obviously, because that may be some genesis of some of the complaints we have, but, and I've discussed this with John Hurd, who originally brought this to my attention. I, I do think it makes sense, if the city is interested in regulating this, to consider passing an ordinance like this, because if those operations ever were to cease one day, and they're no longer an ongoing operation, then the ordinance would apply if they ever were to start back up and we could regulate. I've also talked with John, and, you know, to deal with some of the complaints that we've had, we're going to try and work more closely with those folks to, to help get rid of some of the odors that some of those various installations around town that, that we get complaints about. So, again, something for you to look at, let us know your thoughts.
So, it doesn't regulate the odors that they already emit, but this will handle if they're, if they're spilling waste out, the tractor trailer into the street, and it's going in our stormwater.
So, so that actual action could be regulated, yes, but the odors they're creating, even if, even if they expand their operations, can't be declared a nuisance, even if we have residential or commercial development getting really close to them, can't declare a nuisance. But what you just talked about, actually, could probably be regulated in a couple of different ways, you know, through also through our utilities and stormwater ordinance, and sewer ordinance, if that's getting put into our sewer.
John's talked to me about it. I mean, are we covered on that?
Not, not under this.
None of that, but under our other?
Yes.
Stormwater?
Yes. People are, people are introducing matter like that, whether it's into our stormwater system, or they're introducing that into our, into our sewer system, but I believe we're covered already.
But facilities like that have guidelines and parameters.
But facilities like that have guidelines and parameters that have to stay within. How do we?
If they do, I've heard stories.
We do need some sort of guidelines and parameters.
Yeah, there are these, there are things that can be installed, there are these devices called air scrubbers or transporters that are supposed to remove the chemicals before they get out.
They do something with the proteins, Tommy bag.
But I mean, like a landfill has to, you know, they have to provide cover every night. Dirt or, you know, that's just one of the, one of the regulations, so I just would think. But the EPD's not going to be standing out there to make sure they do it, so it's like...
Well, and, and really our focus is forcing a nuisance ordinance on them. And so like a landfill, you know, if we have one, I think all of them are gone. There are a couple of cities, one of them, I guess people know, but, um, but those, um, those could be agricultural operations anyway, so they could be declared to be...
Well, I have a question. In the past few years since we've been having affairs, if there's a really hot night, you really have a lot of smell.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not coming from the fire.
Okay.
It's emitted from the grain, because we don't know what's under the paper.
What? You don't remember what's down there?
Can we do, if there is, do we want to?
I'm a lawyer. Did you, did you forget that?
Damn. You don't carry, carry the cage of corn.
Well, it will not be considered an agricultural operation, so it was...
Yeah.
Okay, forget it.
I mean, that's, that's a question that really is, I mean, I don't want to answer that. John, more qualified than you.
It's not nuisance smell, isn't it? Like, okay.
Maybe I don't smell anything around town other than the plants. Like, what, what example of bear?
What other, yeah, I mean, what other examples, you might not have to go into specifics, but that we get complaints about, that it would be nuisance.
I don't know if we get complaints about, just one other, about any other, um...
They just, just...
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering, because I don't ever notice.
We did have a portage.
I'm going to American proteins in the morning now, I love it.
Yeah, up off Coman Industrial Park.
I wish I could go everywhere.
Three or four times a day.
They're gone, though, thankfully.
Yeah, it smells good up there, man.
They use wood chips.
I love going up there.
Wood chips.
Complaints on that place.
I know the guy that runs that place.
You've got a big install.
Something like that.
All right, well, moving on.
What happens to it?
Grilling out, loving it, doesn't it?
Just keep grilling.
They're giving it every night.
Well, I mean, if, if...
If you don't like the smell of something.
It's not, maybe not for you. But if, like...
If you didn't bat them over, they wouldn't complain.
On the second page, uh, of industries that are required, they're hardest market industries, um...
Call him when he's ready.
For the purposes of looking at this. Now, if you, if you have a grill and you're grilling out, um, I think it's certain kinds of chemicals, John, isn't it, that the ofactometer picks up? Um, and that's what, that's what it is, if we're looking for more regulating this.
Compounds that, when waste is being broken down.
I hope we don't have to bother them.
The bacteria that eat the waste, they emit certain gases, like hydrogen sulfide and, and other sulfuric compounds, and those should be measured. But those are the things that cause odor, just sulfide.
Well, one other question. Who's the city's industrial pretreatment coordinator?
That is a market facility.
Yeah, that's one of our facilities.
But who is it?
Living in the lid.
Huh?
Living in the lid.
Okay. I was just curious as to who it was. Sounds important. Anything else on stink?
No, I, I will say, uh, in response to Council McRae's question, it, it would have to be determined, and this may be a judge issue, whether or not that delicious smell of your steaks and ribs is a nuisance odor that interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of wine or the food you're enjoying.
Well, if you've got a vegetarian living next door.
Well, I've, I've seen a video of a, of a city worker come to a residence and tell them that they can't, they're grilled, the smell is...
Well, I mean, what you say, though, is something that, I mean, that's the kind of thing that if you could, thinking there'd be an issue, that's definitely why we're talking about this. We can address that and say that, you know, this is not intended to address.
People that were grilled, like, you got the key.
Backyard grilling's not, uh, you know what I'm saying?
I did, no, I did.
Yeah, backyard grilling's not covered.
That will, that will address that.
Unless they call me when they get done with them.
Reclamping, they call us.
I'll, I'll make sure that's in there.
All right, next up's the Coman Police Department request to purchase a CAD system.
You've got two minutes.
I'll try to make it. To explain a little bit of the process of what goes on right now as far as the police department is concerned, um, if anybody in the stream calls 911, it goes to the 911 center upon setting down road. They take the call, they take the information, they call our dispatchers, our dispatchers then notify the officer of whatever the type of call it is. So the officer gets out there, he's got a question, something he can't find, or something different than what he was told, our dispatcher, he calls our dispatcher, our dispatcher calls the 911 center, 911 center gets the information again, tells our dispatcher. So you see where this can get a little bit convoluted at times. We have been in the process for a while of talking with the 911 center, I've had some, I guess, like ad hoc meetings with the 911 director, the sheriff, um, about combining the dispatch, so that they would actually assume the responsibility of dispatching our officers. The call goes to them initially anyway, um, every resident in the city is paying the 911 service, but not really getting the full benefit of it. Um, so we started looking at some pricing of different things. Um, and one is the computer aided dispatch, which is the CAD system. We have one now, but it will not work with the county, so we have to go with their mobile CAD system, um, in our cars in order for this to work and work properly. Um, they use a product called Sun Guard from Superiorion, um, as their mobile CAD. Um, the price for that, um, is fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Um, the maintenance fee on that currently, I think we pay around seventeen thousand dollars a year for support and maintenance on the CAD. Um, it's, it's a lot less with them, it's twenty, two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars through Superiorion a year. So that's a huge, um, difference in itself there. Um, there's going to be other pieces to this, I guess I'm, what I'm here for tonight is basically to get y'all's input on whether we want to pursue this or not, because there's some other pieces that's got to be put together. Um, a phone system, that's got to be put in, because we have to have, um, the 2000 line, which is sort of our emergency line, I guess you would say. Um, for people who's lived here a long, long time, they may just call that number. To, after hours, have a recording on that line that says, if you have an emergency, dial 911, if you're looking for me, you press this number, if you're looking for whoever, press this number. Um, some type of phone system for that. And we have to have an interface for, between our current records management system and that mobile CAD. We have an interface between our CAD system and our record management system, but we wouldn't have anything so that they would communicate together. So, every information that 911 took would transfer over to that, um, report, when the officer got ready to do his report, the driver's license information, the car information, that kind of stuff. Um, those are, we don't have specific quotes on those yet, but they're going to be roughly ten thousand dollars or less each. So you're looking at a total price of around seventy-one, seventy, seventy-one thousand dollars, um, to move this forward. But that's what I want, is to make sure that we are good to go, um, with pursuing this. Yes, ma'am?
I may have not got this wrong, but if you call 911, then they call somebody who caused the blitz. Is that right?
If you dial 911, it goes to the 911 center on setting down road. And then, if it's a call of inside the city, then they turn around and call us. So you have a delay there to begin with.
Why do you do that?
Because we have no other option.
Oh, I'm...
That's what we're trying to fix.
So this is what we would fix.
Well, I mean, I just, that looks really inefficient.
That's why we're trying to fix it.
Do they give you an idea about, um, how much that, is it going to assist with the response time?
Um, it really won't affect the response time, because the, the, the response time is from the time we get the call to the time we get there, so...
But you'll get the call quicker, right? So you'd be able to respond quicker.
From the person calling in to them coming, it would be easily a couple of minutes.
And if they have problems, they call, immediately, they're calling the, the 911 operator, right?
Right.
With this system, they're not going through the other person.
Yes, it will eliminate our dispatchers altogether. They will not answer the phone, they, they will not be in, in the building. Um, it'll go straight to them, they'll send it straight to us.
Is that how most counties do it?
Yes. A lot of cities do it, there's some that have, but most of the metro area, the county, or, uh, uh, they even have independent Chattahoochee, uh, Chatcom is a, is a, a private thing.
Why does our system not work with the county?
Because there's two different computer programs, um...
It's like an Apple and a Windows not working together.
Well, that's a good point. How many dispatchers do you have?
Five.
So, they're gone?
Um...
They have other jobs, I'm sure.
Yeah, there's, well, I, um, tomorrow, or Thursday, I'll be down one already. Um, there's one going to the police academy, um, there's one that's going to, um, come back on the road, he's been off the road for a while, just, um, from health issues.
So that'll reduce your budget then, I guess?
Right. Well, so, what do you think estimated salary and benefits for the five are yearly?
Uh, let's see, it'd probably...
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It won't be that much, I don't think, but, um...
How many do benefits?
There, well, yeah, benefits, yeah, I wasn't thinking about benefits, salary, yes. Yeah, you, you, you probably, maybe even be more.
How much do you think, do you guess, it'll cost to get it onwarded?
From what I'm being told, roughly around seventy thousand dollars, seventy, seventy-one thousand dollars.
That still doesn't fix the county, though.
Yes, that'll fix the whole problem.
Yeah. So now they'll call the one number, and then the dispatcher there will call our officers direct, instead of them calling our dispatcher, then our dispatcher calling our officer.
And we're, we're currently working on, we have to get an agreement with the county, we're working on that, literally right now.
Because it is just really aggravating, when you're calling, you really need somebody, and there's a problem, you know?
And so the, and we've got the upfront cost of about seventy, but then no real cost after that. So I mean, we're going to be saving a quarter of a million a year at a minimum.
Really? There's no upkeep cost every month?
Let's see, the 911 center on every phone bill that you pay, you're paying 911 fees. Well, all that goes to the county. But we're not getting all of that service, that all of our, and all the businesses, any business, any business, and they could have a hundred employees, all their phone bills, that 911 fees are going to the, to the county 911 center. So, response times are better and it's cheaper for the city. And we're going to gain a couple of officers out of the deal, to help on that shortage.
Yeah.
That'll go from dispatch to the road.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Have a motion?
Are we making a motion to just move forward with, this is just a, uh, draft, right? What's the motion, what's the motion for?
Well...
To approve this?
I actually have the, the same quote on my email, but I didn't have it at the time, because everybody's kind of slow about getting this...
And there's not a, you have to go with that group.
That's right.
Because it, it is, uh, that's who the, and the county, I know for a fact, spent over a year when they, they just changed CAD systems about three years ago or so.
Yes.
And they spent well over a year trying out different ones and training and, when they changed over to the one they have now.
So it's just a motion to purchase the CAD system. I, I'll make a motion.
And to go forward, we need probably to add the, go forward with the maintenance and the phone changeover.
Yeah, that's why, the full package, you made a good...
Well, yeah.
Do we need to do it like up to a certain amount, or just, I mean, we're talking about like ten thousand dollars or less each, is that...
What, you're, I'm, I'm sorry, I think the total package is around seventy-one thousand dollars?
That's for the CAD, and the phone system, and the interface. Um, the CAD system and the interface, I do not have exact quotes on yet, but I've been told they're less than, from the companies, they're, they're going to be ten thousand dollars or less.
I would make the recommendation that, if you, if you want to go forward with all the, make the recommendation, allow us to spend seventy-one thousand dollars for the purposes of purchasing the CAD, the phone system and the interface.
We're going to be saving money anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
So...
Should we give them a little leeway, say seventy-five?
Seventy-one thousand versus two fifty.
I'll tell you seventy-five.
Fair.
And then if it comes up short, you just have to come back on whatever part you need to go to finish it.
Second, your motion.
Well, I guess we've got to restate the motion. So, I'll make a motion that we, uh, purchase the CAD system with the additional, was that a phone, what did we say?
Phone system and interface.
Phone systems and interface up to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Now, give me a second.
I'll second.
Second. Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Kason.
Thank you.
Next is IT Comcast contract.
So what we're asking you to do is for you guys to allow us to move from, out of a contract from AT&amp;T into a contract with Comcast for our voice service at each city location. So, all city locations will be moving from AT&amp;T to Comcast. Uh, and the reason for doing that, uh, two big reasons, one is cost, we're going to be saving about, right at nineteen hundred dollars a month, moving from one to the other. Uh, and the other is, we entered into this contract with AT&amp;T, uh, two years ago, and we're still not completed with, we, we're moving from an analog type system to a digital system, a voice over IP type system, and we're supposed to have been done four months. I'm two years into it, we still haven't completed that, so...
And we'll work all that out to being able to cancel out of that agreement?
Uh, Kevin has looked through the...
I reviewed the contract, I'm very comfortable the contract is cancelable by the city.
Okay.
And he's also reviewed the contract with Comcast, and he's comfortable with that as well.
All the problems that were in the AT&amp;T contract have been fixed with Comcast contract.
So better system, less money, you like it?
Absolutely.
Any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve and to terminate the...
To terminate the...
Second by Linda's vote, carries five oh.
Thank you, guys.
Next is, thank you, Shad. Next is item H, uh, temporary building moratorium, not to be confused with a building moratorium.
This is a, he's correct. Uh, this is the moratorium we were discussing previously. The purpose of this is to, uh, issue a temporary moratorium with a period of no more than five weeks on the issuance of permits for metal structures, metal carports, manufactured buildings, manufactured homes, and temporary structures, or the erection of those types of structures in our commercial districts. The only exception to the commercial districts that I did put it in was restricted industrial, um, where there seems to be more, but it, it's more conformity with the kind of uses that are going on in our, in our employment zonings. Uh, but it applies to office professional, institutional, central business district, neighborhood shopping, highway business plant, shopping center, office commercial multi-story multiple use. It's not applied to the simple areas, so if someone wants to, you know, set up a building in the backyard, a solar lamp or anything like that, it does not affect that. Um, again, the purpose of this is to, to the placeholder out there, until in two weeks, you can consider the zoning order, and just it will, we'll bring it up for you on that. Um, that's what the purpose of the moratorium is.
Questions or discussion? Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, please vote, carries five oh, thank you. Next announcements, we have upcoming Playhouse Show, Annie, October nineteenth to November the eleventh. Upcoming fairground events, the Common Country Fair and Festival, October fourth through the fourteenth. Fridays at the fairgrounds, October nineteenth, and Forsyth Emergency Services trunk or treat on October the twentieth.
You should volunteer.
So we'll have them back to back days, trunk or treats.
What do you do at the trunk or treat? You bring your own car?
Just don't worry, you tie the trick.
Or you can bring a new car, and people will decorate it, and they put, they put candy, and then the kids are basically trick or treating at your car.
There gotta be kids going around trick or treating.
In a controlled environment, instead of going knocking on a stranger's door, you know, there's a bunch of people around, it's not...
Like the church.
Yeah, churches do it on...
I love you getting a skull cap.
There is a need for executive session for the purpose of land acquisition, to have a motion going to executive session.
Motion to approve.
Second, please vote, carries five oh, thank you. I have a motion to reopen the public meeting. Please vote, carries five oh. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for, what else? Specified? Two point four minute.
Please vote, carries five oh. I have a motion that we adjourn the meeting. Please vote, carries five oh, thank you.